A call to order, the November 1st, 2018 meeting of the City of Nashua Planning Board. Mr. Secretary of Government, roll call please.
Yes. Mayor Donches, Mike Peterson.
Present.
Scott Leclair, Adam Varley.
Here.
Edward Weber. Here. Alderman David Tenza.
Present.
Alderman Marian Mizili Gola. Steve DuCrane.
Present.
David Robbins.
Here.
Jerry Repucci.
Here.
Maggie Harper.
And we have all regular voting and participating members this evening. Okay, first up on the agenda, we have consideration of approval of the minutes from the October 18th meeting. Has anyone had an opportunity to review the minutes? Are there questions, comments?
I haven't yet. I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as presented.
Motion by Mr. Repucci to approve the minutes of October 18th, 2018 meeting. Is there a second to that motion? Second by Mr. Peterson. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstention.
Oh, sorry, abstentions. Alderman Tenza, Mr. Weber. With that, the motion passes. Communications. Evening, Roger.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the planning board. You have no communications in your packets tonight. I think that's a first, or it happens very seldom. Just to remind the board that we have some individuals in the audience that have some hearing issues, and so please speak into the mic and speak loud enough, any presenters, so everyone can hear. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Report of committee and liaison. Mr. Weber, anything to report?
No meaning. I will now read the procedure for this evening's meeting. After the legal notice of each conditional special use permit, site plan, or subdivision plan is read, the board will determine if the application is complete and ready for the board to take jurisdiction. The public hearing will begin, at which time the applicant or representative will be given time to present an overview and description of their project. They shall speak to whether or not they agree with the staff stipulations. The board will then have the opportunity to ask relevant follow-up questions of the applicant or staff. The chair will then ask for testimony from the audience. First, anyone wishing to speak in opposition or concerned to the plan may speak. Next, testimony will come from anyone wishing to speak in favor of the plan. The applicant will then be given a rebuttal period, at which time they should respond to any concerns raised by the prior public testimony. One public member will be allowed to respond to only those items brought forth during the applicant's rebuttal period. After this has been completed, the public hearing will end, and the board will resume the public meeting, at which time the board will deliberate and vote on the application before us. We ask that both sides please keep their remarks to the subject at hand, and to not repeat what has already been said. We want to be fair to everyone and make the best possible decision based on the testimony presented, and considering all applicable approval criteria established in the Nashua revised ordinances. Thank you for your interest and courteous attention. I would ask you please silence your cellphones at this time. All business conditional special use permits, none. All business subdivision plans, none. All business site plans, case number one. This case has been tabled to a date uncertain, with the butters to be re-notified. New business conditional special use permits, case number two. This case has been postponed until the November 15th, 2018 meeting. New business conditional special use permits, case number three. Riviere University owner, application acceptance of proposed conditional use permit to allow East Campus Improvements Phase Two to include a new two-story Science Center and associated site improvements. This property is located at 436 South Main Street, Sheet 1, Lot 1, and this is owned suburban residence and located in Ward 7. And we will hear this case together with new business site plans, case number five. Again, Riviere University owner, application acceptance of proposed site plan amendment to NR 990 to bring East Campus Improvements Phase Two to include a new two-story Science Center and associated site improvements, at the same address and location. As to new business case number three, conditional special use permit, is someone willing to make a motion that this application is complete and ready for the board to accept jurisdiction?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Robbins, is there a second? Second by Mr. Repucci. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. And then as to new business site plans, case number five, is there a motion that that application is complete and ready for the board to accept jurisdiction?
So moved.
Motion, Mr. Robbins, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The applicant's ready? Please come forward and state your testimony.
Mr. Chair and members of the planning board, good evening, and thank you for allowing Riviere University to appear before you this evening. In May of 2016, the Board of Trustees approved a strategic plan with three basic components. The first, innovation in the sciences; the second, technology and learning; and the third, philanthropy and partnership. Our presentation this evening focuses on the first strategic initiative, which we believe is very concurrent with the workforce development needs of Nashua and the region, and that is innovation in the sciences, the new university Science Center, which replaces Mendel Hall 60 years old. So, thank you, and I introduce Tim Manis, our architect of record.
Thank you, Sister Paula. My name is Tim Manis, with the firm of Dirk and Edson, and I'm back for the board, and thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board, for having us back tonight to hear this application. If you please, I will just give you some overview of the project. What you see on the screen in front of you is an elevation view, and I've got a better one than this in the presentation, of what we envisioned to go in place of the now-removed Mendel Hall. But if I could just, for a moment, review the site plan. You'll recall that we were here in April with a kind of a concept or schematic level presentation to this group, showing you the East Campus improvements. And subsequent to that, we were here in July for the site plan approval for the athletics portion, which in this plan is really kind of off the plan to the top of the page. And now, this particular project continues that East Campus improvement, pardon me, that East Campus improvement effort where, if I could find my, there it is, where Mendel Hall now has been removed, and this new Science Center will be built on the site of what was a Mendel Hall. The building, as you can see, is in the same location. It's a great location on the campus, very convenient for the students going back and forth. It's a prime location along the street, of course, and it's central to Riviere. As far as site plan changes or adjustments, probably the most major thing, I'll mention two things that go on. One is we're removing a driveway that currently cuts the site kind of through here, in order to pursue something that we've been trying to do for several years now at Riviere, which is improve pedestrian access and accessibility to all these sites. So now, we're creating a kind of a pedestrian zone whereby people can cross the street here, or come down along the new sidewalk that we're being, that's being proposed in front of our neighbor's home, and access the Science Site, but also transit over to the Muldoon Center without having to walk, as they did have to until recently, in driveways or across driveways to get there. The volleyball court, which is currently onsite, will remain. You can see that's right here. This is Muldoon. This is a future thought about what addition might be there. And then, of course, the just parking rearrangements we have to go through to bring the site together. I will mention that we have met both before this meeting and earlier today with the neighbors. Our neighbors here at Number 5 Clement Street have requested two things, which we believe are great. There's an existing fence there that is a stockade fence on the north side of their property next to Sylvia Trotter Hall parking lot. We're going to keep that in place, and in addition, we're going to put a new fence behind their lot to prevent any kind of crossing through here, and that's on the plan. So we will make sure that this stockade fence remains as it is today. The second thing that we've discussed with them is, if you'll notice in your packets, and it doesn't show on here because the tree's obscured, but we had proposed the sidewalk come south along Clement Street aligned in this location, and then jog out right where their house is. What we're actually going to do is keep the sidewalk jogged out all the way to where the Sylvia Trotter Hall parking lot is, and then go around. That'll give them more green space on their property. So we'll just, we'll make those changes with, on the site plan that we submit to your planning department. Also, we met this morning with the neighbors on Fairway Street, the Depris, Mrs. Depry, and spoke about how to ensure that the lights from cars coming down this driveway, which they do now, actually, are obscured from those cars. There was an arborvitae hedge planted here, we think about 40 years ago, but it's 40 years old now, and it's getting kind of thin. So what we're going to do is bring a vinyl stockade-type fence, which Riviere's been using around their utilities in different locations around campus, and we're going to start it about where there's kind of a ledgie outcrop. I'm just going to say roughly here in this location. Bring it back along the property line, and then along the property line here, to really secure that away from light intrusion from headlights. We're going to leave the arborvitae where they are, because they, those arborvitae still give some upper-level light protection to that neighbor from the Muldoon Center. And we just generally discuss the lighting that we have on the plans, the signage. There will be no parking signs along this driveway, which is being relocated. There will be curbing along that driveway, so you can't just park your car there. There will be no parking signs and a six-inch curb, so you can't get up in there and do that. And then the new landscaping at the corner here to buffer that property. So, and then the other thing that we are still pursuing is to change the behavior of the bus drivers who like to park there, and I've been talking to them about that, so they can get out of there when they're waiting on teams. You'll recall that that was a stipulation on our previous site plan, so we're pursuing that to make sure that happens for them. So, so we're here for site plan approval, as you know, and I can go into this, Mr. Chairman, if you wish. Anytime Riviere does any appearance before you, we also have to ask for conditional use approval, because we're in the residential zone, and we've supplied you with some background on that, and a couple of waivers for the site plan that we've also supplied background on, and I can go into whatever detail you'd like me to on any of those. But questions or?
If you wouldn't mind just briefly addressing the two waivers requests in the site plan.
Yes. Let me get back to my notes here. Okay, here they are. Okay, the two waivers that we are asking for, okay, now I've got it. The one waiver has to do with, it's Section 190-279 under site plans, the dimension and square footage of all buildings and structures, and show buildings and structures on abutting parcels located across a non-divided roadway. As we say, we are only requesting relief from the requirement to show bearings and distances of all property lines, because we have 43 acres and consist of many properties, and we did not do an entire campus survey to submit the plan for. We have all that information for the subject properties that we are on, just not for every other property that RIV owns. The second part of that, 190-279F, dimension and square footage of all buildings and structures. Again, we're asking for relief from the requirement to show building information for all buildings. There's over 20 buildings on the campus, and we are providing, again, the size of the buildings that we have in mind here. And then on 190-279S, the show buildings and structures on abutting parcels located across a non-divided highway. Again, that's kind of a, it's a large area to survey, and we did include a plan from the Nashua GIS mapping to give that reference of where everything else is around the campus here. So it's mostly kind of drafting-type things that were, or informational drafting-type things we're asking relief from. The other piece of that, 190-72C, non-residential buildings, there's a requirement for sloped roofs, an average slope greater or equal to one foot of vertical rise for every three feet. We're building an institutional building here, and just like all the other campus buildings, modern academic buildings, most of the roof is a flat roof. Some of the roof is sloping, as you will see, actually, let me get one more slide. There. There are some sloping roof portions back in this location, in kind of the great room that slopes, and then also on the stair tower on the end of the building. The rest of the building is probably reminiscent of just the type of massing and roofing that you would see on the library right across the street, or perhaps up the hill at Sylvia Trotter Hall. So those are the, that's the summary of the waivers that we are requesting.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant? Mr. Repucci?
I just want, when you mentioned the buses that are there for sports teams, I would imagine that just stand in that driveway, that they stay, they wait in that driveway where you want them to wait elsewhere. Has the school directed them to a, and identified a location where they can stand, and directed them to do so?
Yes. It's with a variety of bus drivers. Some bus drivers do it, other grumpy bus drivers are not being as, paying attention as they should. So it's a behavioral thing we're trying to work on changing, and it's just going to take a more concentrated effort, and so we're well aware. It's a great point. I mean, nobody wants a bus idling in their back door, so, but, yeah. If it was one person all the time, it would probably be easier, but it's just whatever school's coming there with whatever bus driver, so they just have to be convinced that they can't park there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions for the applicant? Alderman Tenza?
Thank you. Can I just ask, I mean, do you anticipate it's going to be adequate parking for the building, what's being put in there behind it, and what other options are there for folks if, you know, as more cars become, come on campus? Are there local places for them to park, and is it, would it be handicap accessible for them?
Definitely handicap accessible. That's the easy one. Obviously, we're having to meet all the current handicap codes. There'll be handicap parking, let me just go back, right in this area here, very easy access to the front door. The good, it's a good question on parking. By the book, we have enough parking, but we tried to make it, first of all, easier to find extra parking by creating, and this was with the previous project, the athletics project, and they're building this right now, creating this access loop connector over to Sylvia Trotter Hall. So if you can't find a parking place in here, you can keep going over to that parking lot, and that's, that might be the largest parking lot on campus. Many of the people also park down here at the Memorial Hall lot and walk across. That's why we're trying to really make sure we're giving them a strong pedestrian connection off here. But for college campuses, that's always something they have to keep track of, and, you know, every time we would come back here, we would have to talk to you about that, is there enough parking? Because it's beneficial for them to have enough parking. But for, right now, we believe we're satisfying the parking need, but we do need to keep an eye on it, so. The fact that we're replacing an existing facility is the one thing that helps there. Excuse me.
Mr. Weber?
Yes. I want to just say thank you for making such a beautiful campus and working the sciences. My question is, Nashua's trying to keep students to stay in Nashua after they graduate. My question is, are you working with different businesses, scientific businesses relating to this, to empower them to be into an internship, and then actually coming in, working for that company, and staying in New Hampshire? What kind of a, do you do?
That's an easy one for me to defer to the president of Riviere.
Yes, sir. Let me just offer two major initiatives. The first, as it relates to workforce development in Nashua in this region, is the university's Employment Promise Program. It's our partnership with students that as they complete a baccalaureate degree, if they don't have a baccalaureate-level job in nine months, we pay for one year of their federally subsidized student loan, or offer them half a master's degree. Now, as part of that program, internships and practicum are a mandatory component. As it relates to the sciences, and I would highlight biology, biotechnology, and our new program in cybersecurity, we do have advisory councils that are sponsored by our Division of Arts and Science, and our Division of Business, that are specifically designed to link our students with employers. On the science side, one of the relationships we have is with the biotech company Alanza, a little bit more in the Portsmouth area. Of course, the Science Center is also devoted to anatomy and physiology, which is a core course for our nursing students, and we are actually in 12 New Hampshire hospitals, ensuring that our student nurses have an experience in the state. So as it relates to workforce development, there are some of the major initiatives with the sciences, and really, part of the history of why we're so committed to building a new Science Center, to demonstrate our partnership with employers, and to recognize that Nashua is really benefiting from that 128 Carter, and becoming a tech hub in and of itself.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions?
No question. Thank you. We didn't get this, I didn't get this stormwater report in my packet. You mentioned that there's ledge outcropping, and I'm familiar with ledge being, you know, that general area. So is there a net gain in impervious?
There is a net gain in impervious. My engineer is here tonight, Mike Smith from Dirk and Edson, and go ahead and ask your question, he might have to answer it, but...
So without having to report, without having the numbers, I was just trying to familiarize myself with what these, how we deal with the stormwater, and I noticed there's a rain garden.
Yes.
And obviously, for a rain garden to function, you need to have, you know, deep soils that can take that water.
Right.
So you mentioned there is ledge.
There's a lot of ledge around there, and I believe we picked the one spot that does get some infiltration to put the rain garden in, so, but it's very dicey up there, yeah.
And with the, you know, the number of significant rain events we've had, I mean, definitely there's evidence of whether, you know, you have a runoff problem or not. I'm sure you would have observed that.
Yes, and, you know, we have, we have gone through the stormwater planning process. We have our AOT from New Hampshire DES. I know Mike worked with them to make some updates to the basin back there, to make sure the water quality was being addressed, rain garden, basin, so we have, and I think we, I think Peter did get a copy of the stormwater report. Call Haumi. Yes.
Yeah. If you could just identify yourself for the record, too, please. Mike Smith, I'm an engineer with Dirk and Edson Associates. It is possible that there was not a stormwater report with this submission in your packets, because as part of this, if you remember when we were back in July, we treated this East Campus in cooperation with Peter and DES, we looked at it as one project. So all the stormwater design for the entire East Campus, starting with the athletics project, was all done at the same time. So none of that changed as part of this project, and just, so just real quick to give you an update, the existing detention basin that's back there will be slightly enlarged a little bit towards Plan East. They're going to just give it a little bit more storage area. The main reason for that is actually because of the water quality aspects that we worked with DES. They, the increase in impervious is actually very minimal, because there's already buildings, or was buildings here, existing parking lots. We're really just configuring some of that. There is a slight increase, but it's actually not a lot at all. It was more the water quality aspect. DES wanted to see the rate out of that basin slowed down, so that the water had more of time to sit in the basin. It allows the sediment and the pollutants to settle out and that kind of stuff. We've also added to the basin four bays, which, again, will help to slow that water down, get the pollutants and the sediment and that kind of stuff out. So that was actually the bulk of the work that was done, and it was more geared towards water quality than actual stormwater runoff rates.
All right. Another question, I think the crosswalk at the entrance on Clement Street is a new one?
This one, right here?
Yes.
On the, on the left side, there's actually a sidewalk that comes out to that in a crosswalk-like manner. There, I don't think there's a painted crosswalk there, but there's a sidewalk there now.
All right, so...
Oh, is it a mailbox there?
Well, that's not where the mailbox used to be, across the street.
Okay. But we are intending for there to be a crossing there, yes.
So, I mean, I'm just asking the question.
Yes.
I'm sure it has been properly validated for safety, the fact that you have, and I know you have the crosswalks going up to Clement Street, the hill. Any new crosswalk is, has to be looked at carefully for traveling public and crossing students.
Yes.
All right. While I have a quick question, private staff, the parking, do they need a waiver on the parking for the, I forgot what the regulation calls for, for vegetation, landscaping?
I'm sorry, is there a, yeah?
In the parking, when you have large extents of parking, do you need a waiver for not having the landscaped islands?
Only for interior.
For interior?
Just for interior.
Only for interior parking? Okay, I got it. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Other questions for the applicant? Looks like none more for now?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concerned to the plan? If you would like to, this would be the time to come forward. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the plan? At this time, does anyone have any further questions for the applicant before we close the public hearing?
I have a question, probably not for the applicant, but you can, you can still have an input if he needs to. So, I'm sorry, talking to that. In the staff recommendation part of this, it says the board should review prior to making a motion, 190-133F. Are we reviewing that through this process?
Sorry, where?
Right here. If it, if you look at the, on the conditional use permit.
Oh, sorry.
It just says we should, the board should review 190-133F, which I'm sure maybe we did through this discussion, but I just want to make sure we do that.
Yeah, I think that's sort of the standard language. There is a letter in here from the applicant that explains why they believe that they meet the criteria for the approval. The applicant did offer to recite that. I typically don't ask them to go through and recite it all, but...
As long as we're comfortable, it's...
Okay. But certainly, if you have questions about it, then...
No, I don't.
Okay.
If there's no more discussion, I'll make a motion on the conditional use permit.
Oh, hold on, we have to close the public hearing first.
Oh, yeah.
But before I do that, just, no more questions, okay. All right, with that, I will close the public hearing, and the board will now go into the public meeting to deliberate on the application before us. The board does reserve the right to recall any party for further clarification. So, again, as the applicant's indicated, they'd originally come before us in April to provide sort of the broad overview of the full project, all the phases. We approved the first phase, the athletic, upgrades the athletic fields back in July, and so this is Phase Two. And so I think we've, we've sort of largely addressed or heard about the issues and had the opportunity to address them, but with that, does anyone...
But with that, does anyone have any additional questions, comments, issues they want to raise? Mr. Pucci, did you want to make a motion first on new business number three, conditional special use permit?
Yes, I make a motion that we grant the permit. We've satisfied the review of 190-133F as, by the letter submitted to, submitted by Mr. Houston. And they satisfy the nine criteria. I make a motion that we grant the conditional use permit.
Thank you. So a motion by Mr. Pucci to approve new business number three, conditional use permit, the owner applicant being Riviera University, finding that the plan does meet the requirements outlined in site plan NRO section 190 dash 133F. And there are no stipulations. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
The motion is seconded by Alder Muntanza. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. And then next, we have for consideration new business number four, which is the accompanying site plan for this project. Alder Muntanza?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion that the board should make a determination that the plan does meet the requirements as outlined in site plan NRO section 190 dash 146D, subject to the following stipulations. The request for a waiver of NRO section 190 dash 279B, F, and S, which requires scale dimensions and square footage of all buildings and structures, and buildings and structures and driveways, unabutting parcels, is granted, finding that the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. And request, approve the request for a waiver of NRO section 190 dash 172C for roofing standards is granted, finding that the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation as well as stipulations three through six as provided by planning staff.
We have a motion by Alder Muntaza to approve new business number four, site plan, with the owner applicant being Riviera University, finding that the plan does meet the requirements outlined in site plan NRO section 190 dash 146D. With a total of six stipulations, the first two being waiver requests, both reading is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. And stipulations three through six, reading as written in the staff report. Is there a second to that motion? Second by Mr. Pucci. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Steve, let me show this to me. It's just matter if the judge's decision on that court case. And page eight and nine is the judge's decision.
A. So the next items, new business subdivision plans, case number four. That case has been postponed to the November 15, 2018, meeting. And then new business site plans, case number six. That case has been postponed until the March 21, 2019, meeting. So we are on to other business. Other business, case number one, review of tentative agenda to determine proposals of regional impact. And I didn't see a tentative agenda.
There's none.
There's nothing?
No, because the only case we're gonna have at the next meeting, which is new, is the one on 78 Amherst Street. And you've already reviewed that one for regional impact.
Okay.
So there is none.
So given the fact that we do not have a tentative agenda, there are no new projects that have been added, I don't know that we need a motion. So I think we can skip over this item and move on to discussion items. And Mr. Robbins, I know you had a discussion item you wanted to...
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to bring up for consideration to see if there was an appetite to discuss sidewalks, the amount of money that we obtain in lieu of having builders build sidewalks. We know that it costs $100 plus per linear foot. We know that we request an in-lu-of payment of $50 per linear foot. In effect, by so doing, it could be said that we are stiffing the taxpayers $50 for every linear foot of sidewalk that we accepted in lieu of payment for. Because if it costs, actually costs over $100. But if it costs $100-plus to build a linear foot of sidewalk and we request an in-lu-of payment of $50, that means somewhere down the road, somebody has to make up, somewhere in the city, that other $50 per linear foot whenever a sidewalk is put in. And I recognize in saying this that there is no direct connection between a sidewalk on a street that is not built and for which we request and obtain $50 a linear foot, and a sidewalk a year, two years later, some other part of the city, which costs $100 or $100, more than $100 per linear foot. But the whole idea is, I believe, that there is some kind of equality and equity between the two, and that's the reason for doing it. So all of that said, and I don't want to belabor the point, and if there is no appetite to talk about the possibility of increasing the in-lu-of payment, that's fine. I'll let it sit for a few months, and then I'll bring it up again. If there is an interest in doing this, then I would suggest that we ought to talk at the outset about a process for doing it. Because I think it's very important that if we do go ahead with something like this, everybody have an opportunity to weigh in on this and that the Board of Aldermen know in advance that this is something we might be proposing. And I'm sure that people will have thoughts about it. And we might even want to hold a separate meeting to allow people to talk about this. So I've said enough. And I just wanted to bring that up. My thought is if anybody has any thoughts, great. If not, we can go home.
I just, in the first instance, I just wanted to ask staff. My recollection is that the ordinance doesn't specify the amount. So can you just remind me where the $50 originated?
Well, originally, it started out as $10. And then the board looked at it after several years and upped it to $50. I don't think there was a transition in between. It was based on an analysis done, I think, by the City Engineers Office at that point in time. And you based it on a reasonable cost. You also have to look at, there's sometimes benefit to the general city when a sidewalk's put in, for neighborhood kids going to school, that sort of thing, that is maybe not, you know, other than the residents, there's other people that use the sidewalks. So you might argue that there is a benefit from a public standpoint. So it's really a fee that's been determined by the planning board on a periodic basis, not so frequently. But it's certainly something the board could look at again. And I suggest you would maybe get some good estimates from the City Engineers Office first as to what those costs might be. You're concerned whether the fee's too low or too high. I presume you think it should be increased somewhat? Is that what I garnered? I'm sorry, I was trying to get the people out, and I didn't hear the...
Yeah, I think Mr. Robbins was saying that we've heard in the past that the actual cost is closer to $100 a linear foot, whereas we're asking for a contribution of 50 per foot.
Right. I think in the past, you know, if a private contractor does the work, sometimes the costs are, can be less than when the city does a project because there are certain things that, when the city does a project, there's, you know, a lot of other costs, bid processes. And it's sometimes, you know, Steve could explain that better than I could, I think, because I don't get involved in day-to-day bidding of contracts for, you know, public works projects or private projects.
We had a discussion, it was another plant board meeting, I believe. It might have been some special get-together.
Mm-hmm.
And I did, I did present some average costs, current costs for sidewalks. And, you know, whereas you might be able to put just curbing in, say, an asphalt sidewalk behind it or concrete and come in under $100 a foot. And just to let you know, the average cost of, say, vertical curbing is, the going rate installed is about $40 a foot, just for the curbing. So then you have all the other things. So additional costs do, are incurred when you build a sidewalk. You impact the land behind the sidewalk. When you put curbing, there's a good chance now that you need drainage because now you're gonna collect the water. You gotta get it, gotta put it somewhere. So all of those things add up, and you get that average in excess of $100 a foot.
Mr. Robert?
I'd like to ask, how is the, I would call it slush fund for the different areas, how are they doing compared to the income, compared to the cost of what you've done in, over the past couple of years? Is the funding enough to take care of those, or it's lacking?
Well, those accounts, they're called trust funds. We have four quadrant funds. And as you would expect, the southwest quadrant usually has the most money. But the biggest needs are in the south, well, the northeast and the southeast. They have denser populations. So those funds are usually dry, those quadrants are usually dry with not having much coming in and having a lot of need. So we do have some, you know, some reasonable amounts in the southwest and the northwest. And we use them when we have projects in those areas. The, we used to have more money in the past, I think simply because we did a lot more collections in the past, with more subdivisions going in and those kinds of things. No, I don't think, if you wanted to ask if we have a healthy amount left in these, I don't think so.
But that, that wouldn't be addressed by anything we did here. The way that the city is quadrant out is not in our control. We don't get involved in that. If we charged $1,000 a foot, if there's a disproportional amount of money going into one quadrant and needed in other quadrants, that, we wouldn't be touching that.
That's right.
Right. So it's not really, it's not in, something that would be affected by us changing the cost per foot.
Right. And I think the idea, and Roger can help me with this, the idea behind doing quadrants is that if you collect in the southwest quadrant, you really want them to be spent in that general area. There's another option that can be changed through the Board of Aldermen where you can actually spend it anywhere in the city. But we have to go through that legislative process. But the original question is from Mr. Robbins is, is the cost that we collect per foot, is that, is that the right amount? Does it reflect current costs for building sidewalks? And then Roger, in his response, said, well, there is also a public use as well. So are you gonna hold the developer responsible for the full cost of the sidewalk or just a partial cost? I think it goes back to intent. That must be examined.
Yeah, I guess the other thought I have, too, is if we were going to consider changing the current practice, I think we'd want to think about what the process would be that we would utilize. I mean, it's sort of an unusual circumstance in that the ordinance doesn't specify. It sounds like it's just been based really on historical practice and choice of the planning board. But I guess I'm wondering, Roger, do you have any recollection? I mean, when the board changed it in the past from $10 to $50, did the board hold a public hearing as to that change? Or otherwise, you know, sort of put the issue out in the public for consideration?
I'm trying to recall. I don't, I think the board just had a discussion on it to probably put it under other business and modify the fee that way. The ordinance gives you that discretionary authority, the way it's read, that you can determine that fee based on a reasonable construction amount and based on what the board feels is an adequate amount to cover, you know, to use for public sidewalks. The original intent was that a lot of, you know, sidewalks got waived, and there were needs in, whether it was a quadrant. The idea was to try to use those funds as part of a safe schools movement to use those as, let's say, a part of a city's match on a grant fund to multiply in. And there were quite a few sidewalks built near elementary schools or city parks using those funds. And I think that's still the intent behind public works. You try to take, when those funds are used, you try to dovetail them in with other funds that are out there to magnify the usage of those funds for the best good of that particular quadrant. And that's why it was split out in the quadrants. So that area that was giving those funds, they could be used for developing crucial sidewalks in those areas.
Mr. Pucci?
Yeah, I think this is much more complicated than this. I really can't let stand the suggestion that somebody's being stiffed by us charging $50 a foot, using that word. The taxpayer's being stiffed. Taxpayer's not being stiffed at all. The ordinance gives us specific authority to identify a cost per application, for a specific application. It's not, we're not legislating a policy and a rule here. We're looking at specific applications and where, as a board, we have the authority to make a determination on the fee. Now, that is a much more complicated thing, in my view, because one could make the argument that if you turn around to a developer and try to charge them and set the same cost of the contribution to the actual cost of the sidewalk, then the developer could easily turn around and say, "Well, I'll just put the sidewalk in then. And then we'll end up with pieces of sidewalk where we don't want them, and we won't have the money contributed to the fund." Because there's no difference to the developer. What does he care? He's not saving any money by making the contribution. Do you see what I mean? So I think it's just, I think it's a little more complicated than just saying, "We're gonna take that money." And I will come back to the idea that I, nobody likes to hear me say that I think that there are, this is a questionable tactic when you, when we do this as opposed to an assessment that the city makes on developments, on property, that is, on investment in a development for the city that is not directly related to the property that's before us. I really think that's a complicated thing. And this was a, this was kind of, I know that Director Mashon had indicated that developers were unhappy with the inconsistency sometimes of not knowing what was coming. Right? That was more of a problem than having to pay the money, is not knowing exactly what the fee is gonna be. So when we turned around and said, "Okay, we'll do it this way," and that we said we would do it $50 a foot and would take out 18 feet per lot for a driveway, and that's the formula we would use. And then everybody who's coming forward with a plan would know exactly what they're looking at. That was a big part of making that decision, was to make it clarified. So I would be very hesitant to modify, to get into modifying that. I think we put it in a place where it's manageable and nobody's complaining about it. And I think if we raise it, people will complain about it.
I agree. Yeah, I mean, I would, just to add to that, I mean, I, you know, I think you correctly pointed out that the ordinance allows us the discretion to basically do it on a case-by-case basis. But as a matter of practice, we really have established a policy. And even before the sort of recent clarification... And even before the sort of recent clarifications, you know, as long as I've been on the floor, it's been fifty dollars per foot. And that's been the expectation, so, at a minimum, and I would say, if we were going to, you know, discuss potentially changing that amount, I think we should do it i, in a more formal process, where at, at least, we're having it on the agenda, it's going out with a public notice, so that, you know, developers or others who are interested in participating in the discussion can come and have that discussion. And, you know, that we would, because I, I think the, the notice aspect of it is important, not just in having a discussion, but then in communicating to applicants that this is going to be the policy of the board. And I'm not suggesting, one way or the other, I'm not suggesting that we should change it, but that if we were going to, you know, that this would not be sufficient, in my view, in terms of having a discussion about that, this issue. Mr. Robbins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I appreciate very much the, the thoughtful comments, and, and I take my colleague, Mr. Rapucci's comment to heart. My, perhaps I was overcome with the spirit of the political puffery that has gone on recently in our country when I said that someone was getting stiffed, and I thank you for, for bringing that to my attention. I certainly did not bring this up with the intent that we would take any kind of action tonight. I brought it up with the, the hope that we would get exactly what happened, a little bit of discussion. And I would agree that we would have to very carefully decide how we wanted to do this in a way that was open and transparent, allowed for all the nuances, one of which Mr. Rapucci mentioned. I mean, at some point, you raise, you raise the price to something, and developers will say, hell, it's easier and cheaper for me to just put the sidewalk in here. And we might well say, well, well, really, we don't need a sidewalk there, but, they can do that. So, that, that would certainly, I would hope, would be a part of any, any future discussion we'd had. That, and some of the things that I'm sure we haven't thought of. I am, I am content to step back from this now and let it percolate a little bit, it, it'll, it'll, it'll come around again, you can be sure. And, you know, if anybody has any thoughts in, in the future, we can talk about it, and if not, I suspect we'll hear about it after the first of the year anyway, because I'm, I'll bring it up again. So, thank you all very much.
You're welcome. Any other discussion items? Alder Muntaza?
Thank you, if I could just mention one thing, I know about a month ago, we talked, when Director Marchand was here, about the need for the city engaging in a, in a new master plan. I know one of the last Economic Development Committee meetings, Director Marchand was there again. Alder Will and Melissa Goldie was there, and I know there was a, a good conversation between the committee members about how important a, a new master plan is, and certainly something like sidewalks would, would, would fit into that in a plan for where the city wants to put sidewalks in, and how we want to make the city more walkable outside of downtown. And so, hopefully, in, in next year's budget, we'll continue to talk about funding, you know, the necessary line items for, for the master plan and move that forward. As we hope, right now, on November first, I'm sure come January first, the budget writers will completely forget about it, but hopefully, we can keep them, keep reminding them and find a little extra money to get it done.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I could add, I, I know that the Community Development Division, Sarah Marchand, and, and the Planning Department too, that's always been in the capital improvement budget, the request to fund the master plan, so hopefully, maybe it will gather some steam this year. It is in the, your capital improvements program and plan every year, so, and it usually gets an A rating. So, thank you.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, I'll be happy to take a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Rapucci to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes, and we are adjourned at seven fifty-five.